To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's call it.
What are you doing?
Yes, go quick. Council meeting.
It's Brent.
Yeah, we're all here. We just did the pledge of allegiance.
Call or roll call, is he coming?
He goes, what a mess, what a mess.
Counselperson Josh R.
Soon to arrive Brent Byers, Mayor Jimmy John King.
Counselperson Craig Anderson.
Counselperson Jeremiah Logan.
Uh, we'll be looking for approval of tonight's agenda. Any additions or deletions?
Uh, tonight, there shouldn't be any additions and sorry, no deletions.
All right, we're looking for approval of the agenda as is.
Move for approval.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Approval of council meeting minutes of regular meeting, May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Second.
Discussion. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carries. And we'll be looking for approval of council meeting minutes of special meeting of May sixteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Questions, discussion? Any in that, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that also carries. Now it takes us to financing budget. We got the table with the additional listing. Any questions as you approve that, ask Administrator Schimmel? If you hear no questions, or you have none, now looking for a motion to approve finance.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Right.
Opposed, that carries. That I think is ready into general business. First item on our general business tonight is Dog Park Task Force update.
Hi everyone, my name is Katie Johnson and I'm here to give an update about the Dog Park. Uh, I've seen there are a couple new faces since we started this project, so I'll give a quick history of our group. About five years ago, Mayor and daughter, her mom Kathy and Kathy's service doc Karma came to the city and asked about opening a dog park. The council advanced the idea and created a task force to plan, develop and fund. The task force was created and operated by Mayor, Drew Thursow, Wendy Tim and myself, and we were basically four community members that were passionate about dogs and saw a need for a dog park in its community. Since there was no taxpayer money used to fund the materials for the dog park, it was up to us and our supporters to make our dream a reality. Throughout the past five years, we raised our money for, from our events and our donation efforts. In January two thousand fifteen, preliminary approval for the park was granted. In October of two thousand sixteen, the council gave conditional approval for our location. This past fall, we were able to build a fence with the help of a community member, Tony Thurlow, the task force and public works. Uh, you want to take this time to, uh, give a special thank you to Sean. Thank you for all your support, help and guidance through everything, and thank you to you and your staff for going in the continuing efforts, uh, for the role of the park and that. I don't think we could have done it without Sean, so thank you. Uh, so far, the park has been well received by the community and we are blown away by how many people are out visiting and getting the park use. We plan to continue with a Friends of the Dog Park group and that will continue to fundraise for the upkeep and the maintenance of the fence. Uh, we hope to get play features for the park and hopefully a lighting and shelter out there. Uh, we have recently added a few members, Juan Esri also, and to our group and look forward to the future of our dog park. We want to encourage our community members to make the park a fun and safe place to exercise and socialize our dogs. Our grand opening event will be on Saturday, June fifteenth, from eleven AM to one PM, and we want to invite mayor, city council, public works, city staff and all the citizens to the grand opening. Our sponsor recognition and ribbon cutting will be at eleven thirty. We hope to see everyone there and bring your dogs. Uh, we just handed out a basically just our invitation and a flyer that will kind of host around town as well.
Wonderful.
Any questions? Don't be on there with questions.
Any questions for yours?
If I can add something, uh, we are intending on getting the driveway put in. Uh, the olive pile has been hauled out now and it's kind of landscaped. The, the base has been done anyway, so we will be adding a parking lot if weather ever cooperates. But I was hoping we would have had it done by now, but it's just been a wet soup hole out there all spread. So hopefully by the grand opening, if we ever get even a three day dry spell in there, we'll try and get some gravel put down so, because I know it's muddy getting back there, but we've really been at the mercy of mother nature.
Yeah, I understand and appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, we want to thank you on our behalf. You all were patient with the items we had to work together on, so we appreciate that. And it's great to see volunteers stay with it the whole time and now are pledging to continue on, so that's a great thing from our end.
Plus, uh, for, if you know us, we're pretty strong. So, we're gonna, we're gonna see it through, so, um, we appreciate everybody's help.
Thank you for your hard work and your continued with us. It is, it's very nice. All right, next under your motions of general business is Summerfest two thousand nineteen. We got outdoor event approval and temporary liquor license. City has received an outdoor event permit application with the Chamber of Commerce for Summerfest two thousand nineteen. The scheduled events is July third, street dance, July fourth, summerfest run, car show, arts in the park, which include various activities, foods, crafts, vendors. July fourth will end with the grand parade and the fireworks. July fifth, teen dance pool party. July sixth, volleyball tournament. The parade route will be the same as last year. The Chamber is requesting to shut down Lake Shore Drive on the third and the fourth. Chamber is also seeking a temporary liquor license to sell beer on July third during the street dance at Florence Park.
I think you did a fantastic job explaining what we're all looking for, so, um, freedom. My name is Mike Crane and on behalf of the Circle Chamber, I'd like to request my substance of an outdoor event permit application and temporary liquor license for summer, thus two thousand nineteen. The street dance will take place on Wednesday, July third, with a local, uh, singing sensation, uh, Aaron Simmons, uh, that will play from six to nine and then diesel drive from nine thirty to twelve thirty. We'd like to close Lake Shore Drive from Second Street Northwest to Third Avenue Northwest. Setup and setup will be the same as last year in regards to the stage, the beer garden, four bodies. Per recommendation of law enforcement, we are staying with the same point entry near the, near Florence Park parking lot. As in the past, the Chamber will contact the neighbors affected by the dance and arts in the parks. July fourth, we will continue with the growing of the Arts in the Parks Festival in Florence Park. Um, for arts in the park, we will leave, close Lake Shore Drive again, the Second Street, the Third Street Avenue. Then close the street on the opposite loop from Third Avenue Northwest to Second Street Northwest for both the fun runs and the fire department's water fights, should they choose to host them, uh, this year, as yet we have not heard it or confirmed if they were going to. Um, City Cruisers typically holds their annual car show, Out of Strikers and Allegion. During the arts in parks, the Chamber will be setting up an information booth this year to give out directions and for emergency purposes. This will be an ongoing booth for issues that arise, uh, weather or any other needs by the city or the police department. Also, our park volunteers will be wearing construction green vests that say volunteer on the back, as we are trying our hardest to make sure that people know who to contact if there is a concern. The parade scheduled for the evening of the Fourth of July requires the same streets be closed as in the past with the change of one additional block pass, the care center turning right on the fourth, right on fourth to Highway thirty and continuing to the school parking lot. Bill Schimmel has been very helpful in our requests with being that in public works and we really appreciate this. There will be, uh, parade volunteers in golf carts and radios, the same as in the past years, covering the parade route, um, and they will also be wearing the safety vest. Uh, our committees have been busy since the first year to work on Summerfest, so we are working on time to meet with Deputy, Deputy Straylo to ensure that public safety concerns are met. The Public Works Department has been instrumental in assisting in the past in summer events. We'd like to ask permission to receive their assistance again this year in the same ways as we have in the past. We appreciate all the efforts from the Public Works and the City of Stewartville who helped with Summerfest. It takes many people and so many extra hours. We value everyone involved in making Summerfest happen. We also really appreciate the fire department who takes time out of their lives on holiday to spend the whole day wiring the fireworks together so we can enjoy twenty to thirty minutes of excitement. Many people don't know how much time and money goes into this celebration and how easy it is to forget to even say thank you and how much we appreciate being the host of this event in the Stewartville community and surrounding communities. Again, a big thank you to everyone. New this year we'll be adding a teen dance and pool party at the Stewartville Public School on Friday, July fifth. The hours are between eight and ten after the pool closes for that day. We have a DJ service and, or serviced by the Chamber member, uh, wealth and entertainment, DJ services, Kevin Walter. There will be, uh, games and door prizes, free popcorn and concession stands will be open for purchase. There will be a five dollar ticket fee that will cover the expenses and a proposal was submitted to a sponsor to cover pool rental. On July sixth will be the annual sand volleyball tournament at Bear Cave with Jill running the event as she has in the past. As Summerfest continues to grow each year, we are extremely pleased that this event has, uh, on record of no incidences. Everything is coming together and we hope with the weather will just give us a nice beautiful summer week, so lots of people can come and enjoy the festival and celebrate our independence there. Thank you for your time and your support and your continued to give to the Chamber. So the additional supplies we requested, um, just a quick recap will be, Public Works and City Hall will be the ones in the past with them. Um, barricades will be the same as last year that we had done, um, fencing for the street dance. I know in the years past we've worked with, uh, sentenced to serve to get them. Um, one set of leechers, the set of leechers in the ice skating rink for the tractor pole, um, the fish pond being stocked. If it hasn't been done, then we have a business that's willing to, um, pay for the stocking of the pond for the fishing, uh, or the fishing contest for the kids. And then the picture tables removed from the brown open pavilion for the dance arts in the parks and, um, anything and everything that we've proven we should have done in the past will make it work. Thank you.
The DNR is supposed to be stocking that on a regular basis. They were going to check on the population. Uh, I can shoot him an email to see if that's been done yet this year, but they took that out last year that they would continually yearly keep an eye on the population there and restock if they could.
Perfect, perfect.
So.
Yeah, if we do a quick email and then just touch base and see or something like that, it'd be fantastic.
Any questions or anything from the table? I'd like to thank you guys for, that's a great idea to put up an information booth. Thank you very much for that on that. There's always a lot of questions and even I don't know who to go to half the time.
That's one, one of the things we've really been trying to call to talk to and just make it open and, uh, who it is and that way, maybe not necessarily as much as responsibility falls on the city, they can come asking for us and then, you know, people wanting to get involved down the road too.
I trust it was with the neighbors along the road there and stuff. Perfect. Anything else, council? If not, for a motion to approve the outdoor event application, temporary liquor license for Summerfest two thousand nineteen.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Do we have a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. Thank you. All right, next one under general business. Southern Hills Expansion Planning Request. Atwell Group, representing Sun communities, have requested that development process start prior to completion of the EAW. They would like to submit their application plat for a July second hearing date. Due to the questions and concerns from the public, the staff is recommending that the EAW process be completed and reviewed prior to submission of the plat process. And I will say right now, I'm gonna make a motion that they do do the EAW before they stick a shovel in the ground. I think it'd be better for them to have it done before than later and it'll be better for everyone concerned that wants to submit a question or be at a public hearing or have their thirty day due process. That's what I am saying. Anybody else?
I'll second your motion and I'd deny their request here. I don't understand why everything's going a million miles an hour all of a sudden. Like I get, again, now that emails are coming out of the work and people calling and with rightfully so, I think, just because I don't even, I can't even answer anybody anything because all of a sudden it's thrown in here and here we go. It's, I, I don't know what's, what changed or what, what the deal is, but I think we need to slow down and let them follow each step and figure out what's going on first.
You all right?
I don't feel comfortable going through with allowing them to leave product process, do every step in order.
Josh?
Yeah, the same thing. They're going so fast. Why do they need to push everything so far ahead?
I agree with everyone else. We just need to follow the procedure.
All right, we have a motion and discussion, or second, we have a discussion. All in favor of denying the development process to start prior to completion of the end review of the EAW, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That takes us to technology and computer systems upgrade. The last time the city replaced and updated the main server was in two thousand twelve. The city continues to set aside funds each year for the purpose of updating and replacing the city's computer system and applications. We currently have approximately thirty-eight thousand in our long range technology reserve fund. We have received quotes from our IT consultant PC applications for three items of need. These will carry the city's system and is needed more immediately due to a recent notice from fund balance saying that we were ending support for server two thousand eight and win seven systems. This is, I, I won't be in all the dirty details about this IT stuff, because you know, you know. We also have a problem with one of the mirrored disk drives. These items may upgrade of hardware, software and backup or critically replace now and save for issues. So, server replacement and power supply, eight thousand nine hundred ninety-nine point nine nine. Server software, two thousand forty-nine point nine nine. Shelby cabinet, one thousand forty-nine point nine eight. Labor, two thousand nine hundred. Here we go. Black cloud subscription support, nine hundred and ninety-nine and ninety-nine cents. Just needs to make the math hard. We also need to upgrade some laptop and desktop units in some of the various departments, which staff and PC applications are completing that review. The combined needed upgrades of the above referenced servers information total sixteen thousand four hundred forty-nine ninety-five and a possible four to six laptops. Two to three desktops should not exceed thirty thousand, with some reimbursement coming from the water, wastewater funds. Council, action. Staff is recommending, the staff recommendation is presented for your review and approval denied. So, do we have a motion to approve the list of various, uh, server and power supply and hardware and laptops and computers and all the stuff we need?
I think the city really needs it. The staff has outdated computers, laptops, and with, uh, security these days that everything should be on backup and a big server. I have a question. What all is the server used for that?
It's our general main server for the whole city operations.
So like file shares?
Yes.
But more importantly, it's all of our utilities and billing, uh, system.
We're all networked through that one.
Okay. And that, and that's not something that could be moved to like a cloud service?
That's where the backup will come?
The backup's on the cloud, but like, uh, um, moving, moving the physical server to a virtualized cloud offering would be, would that be more expensive?
Yeah, I guess.
Was that something that was considered?
No, I don't think they even talked about adoption like that, but we can check with them.
Yeah. Barb had started to work last, um, kind of end of the summer, fall, and so we were gonna look at it during the year. Well, then, um, Charlie came to us as he was doing some review work and just said because of the loss of support of our Windows seven and server two thousand eight, it meant having to move this up. So, he, they tried to keep us up to date on latest and greatest, and one of the big things was changing that support over to the cloud.
Okay.
Josh?
I don't have any questions. It looks good.
Guess we need a motion to approve or deny these requests.
I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that carries. That will take us to Mayor's staff's talking request. Mayor's report tonight. City would like to send sympathy to the families of Ross McEnryide, Elaine Eggers, Maurice Carroll and Jan Stagle. That's Tracy's mom. Storm is coming to town July fifteenth through nineteenth. Use this group to help with painting, yard work, minor construction, house clean, almost anything you need. You can sign up by calling Renee Wilson at two six one five four one three. Sponsored by United Methodist Church. International luncheon hosted by United Methodist Church Women will be held on June twelfth. You can contact the church office for more information. Rolling Hills Transit is conducting a community survey so they can provide the best possible service to meet the needs of your transportation. The survey is on the city's website. It can also be filled out in person at City Hall, at our library and at the Center for Active Adults. And once again, congratulations to the graduating class of two thousand nineteen. Just always remember that you can make a difference. Just always be the best person you can out there, no matter what you're doing. If it's working at a dog park or if it's working at the Chamber or helping down here at the city, just always do your best. That's all I've got for tonight. City Ministers' report?
Uh, report's in your packet. Uh, obviously just bring your attention to different meetings or our street tours, uh, coming up. Um, we did just, um, over the last day or two, get notice of another special meeting we'll need you for, at least for a few minutes, on, um, Tuesday, June eighteenth, just prior to the EDA meeting. Um, there's, um, potential projects in, being looked at or looked into by Geotech, and so we're gonna try to help them with, uh, some state loan applications, uh, but it does require a public hearing for you to approve us going ahead with that, so.
Any questions for the minister?
No, no action tonight, just know that, um, on your calendars. Uh, five forty-five.
No more questions for you? All right, thank you, Bill. Uh, you want to take care of the finance report, Bill?
Yeah, the auditors finally got back to us. It looks like they're ready to go to meet with the finance committee, so Cheryl and I'll try to work with you two to, um, set up that review time. I did tell Andrew that because of work schedules, he may have to come at the end of the day, uh, to help everybody out, and he was totally open to that, so, um, we'll try to bounce some dates and times here off with you. And then, um, following that, then the auditors will come to present, um, a review of the two thousand eighteen audit.
Any questions for Bill on the finance mainly? All right, thanks Bill for that too. Public Works Director Sean?
Uh, just one thing that's come up. Uh, been very busy with a lot of water in basements and stuff like that as of late, so especially after the raids on Sunday. Today we spent all day dealing with issues with that, so if you get calls on certain things with that. Uh, all of them have been dealt with to this point, but people get upset when their basements are wet and they could call and complain.
Any questions for the Public Works Director? Comments or compliments or anything? Or what a wonderful job he's doing? Tell him to thank the guys for doing such a good job with the brush dump.
Actually, it does look good out there. I was just out there and it's looking, I thought. Thought I was right up and looked better. You don't have a lot of control over that, buddy.
All right, well, we got our thanks, Sean. Onto the city engineers report. Oh, I'm sorry, we got the wastewater, April Water Wastewater Report, Mayor for our approval. Now, any questions on that? All right, now, city engineer Jenna. Sorry about that, Jenna.
That's all right. Um, tomorrow evening, we do have the open house for this year's project. Um, Elcar is not starting this week. They are looking to start sometime next week. Um, get updated schedule from them tomorrow though. Um, they decided not to start right away because there is wait time on structures, so, um, to get the catch basins and manholes, so they didn't want to tear it up ahead of time, um, before they can get working.
Any questions for the engineer? What time does that start tomorrow night, Jenna?
It's from five to seven.
Five to seven. Anybody wants to be there, you can be there.
It's open house format, so no presentation, just, we'll have the drawings there and everything. People can ask questions.
All right, thank you, Jenna. All right, uh, do we need a drum roll or anything now? First time seeing anywhere on any Stewartville channels, new library director, Nate Dupree.
Do you have a report for us? I have a, I have a brief report and I, I want to say that, um, I've been a library director for, I think, fourteen of the twenty years I've been in libraries and I never had one of these before, so I feel incredibly welcome and, uh, by Stewartville, this is, this is great. And, um, I'm gonna give this out everything I have and I think you're gonna be really happy with where the library goes from here. Uh, quickly, I, um, I've just been here two weeks, but, um, a couple things that we've been working on, um, we, uh, there hadn't been a lot of planning going into the summer reading program, so we're playing, uh, doing a lot of catch up with that. Going forward, my next report, you'll see an update on where we are there. Additionally, we are switching over from, uh, Spectrum to Jaguar for our internet. Uh, last week, fiber cable was installed in the library and we're gonna switch over in, I believe it's July second, um, and that'll include, uh, that'll increase our, um, our download speed from sixty megabits per second to seventy and our upload from four megabits per second to twenty, so it should be a pretty substantial increase in bandwidth for the library. Um, and next week, on Monday, we will be returning to new, our, our, uh, our previous level of open hours per week with a schedule change. Um, Mondays we will be open from ten until seven, uh, Tuesday, Wednesdays, ten until six, Thursday, ten until seven, Friday, ten until five and Saturday, ten to one. Uh, that, from a branding and consistency of our standpoint, I felt like it was important for us to be open at ten in the morning every day that we were open. Additionally, uh, the seven to eight hours, anecdotally and from some of the cert data I was able to collect, that was, the library was largely underused during the seven to eight hours, seven PM to eight PM hour, the library was open on, um, Mondays and Thursdays, so, um, we're just gonna shift those over to Monday mornings. Any questions?
Did you get your move figured out or did you find a place to live yet or?
I am very much in flux in every possible way. I'm glad you made it down. Yep, thanks.
Good to have you on board. All right, thank you, Nate. No fire chief report tonight, so that takes us to community commission board reports. Chamber of Commerce, anything to add?
You already heard from Wayne, so we're busy getting, uh, Summerfest already built.
All right. EDA, HRA?
I missed it.
Oh, that's right, you did, didn't you? Forgot about that. And we just met, uh, hired a, that company to, uh, do video of the city.
H and H Video.
H and H.
Tried some promotional videos again for the community.
Then Ron Zinklins here from C to give us a little, uh, presentation, training, uh, being good EDA members. Maybe a little wait for some of you. Finance?
Uh, meeting coming up, I guess. Yeah.
Yeah, that, was it the June third? Is that the one you said is either?
Monday, June third or Wednesday?
I'm gonna be coming back into town and I don't know what time I'm getting on Monday, so just go ahead and go with the Wednesday thing and I'll show those stuff by after.
Wednesday, three thirty, right? Thank you. And then they will present on to an eleventh September meeting.
All right, library?
Everything was covered.
Okay. Park Board?
Um, no report. We're meeting in a couple weeks at Florence Park.
First now, we got the minutes of May thirteenth in the package. Got any questions on any of that? Plaidzoni?
Uh, we get, get anything coming up, Cheryl?
Yeah, we have a June second meeting.
Yep, we have a June second meeting. Whatever it is.
Public Safety? Right's not here. About three, what do you have? Nothing? Public Works?
No report.
Ready?
No report.
RoC.
No report.
Stu one eighty. Transit Advisory Committee. Communications, none in the back of the night. Takes us to open mic, to open mic policy. City council welcomes and encourages participation of the community members. Please keep in mind that comments must be pertinent to city business and must adhere to the ad hoc rules. That means no employees may and may be used. Please do not expect action from the council this evening regarding your concerns, requests, and comments. The women, four minutes. Speakers be recognized only once. At this time, we ask anyone who would like to do this, please step up to four, state name and address. Is he okay back there?
Oh, yeah.
Nobody wants to open mic? That takes us to the last motion of the evening.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Motion to the second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? To adjourn.